Good evening. Called to order, the meeting of the BUHS number six board, Monday, July 13th, 2015. And welcome everyone and thank you all for your service during a nice beautiful summer evening. We might be wishing we were outside, but we'll, I think we can dispatch this business fairly easily. There's not a tremendous amount of heavy lifting to do tonight, I don't believe. We will start off with clerk's report as we normally do. And we have two meetings worth of minutes to approve. The May 18th meeting minutes were deferred at our last meeting. They have been circulated, so we should approve those first and then we have the June 1st minutes. Is there a motion?
I move the minutes of the May 18th meeting.
Okay. Second. Second, okay. Any additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes? If not, all in favor of approving the minutes of May 18th as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or abstentions? Does anybody remember if there were any abstentions? No? Okay, very good. June 1st, minutes which were circulated prior to this meeting. Is there a motion accordingly?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved second. All right. Is there, are there any additions? Corrections, or deletions? Okay. How about you Ricky? You like all those minutes from the last meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, all in favor of approving the minutes of June 1st? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or abstentions?
Opposed to the June 1st, yeah, I'm abstaining from June 1st.
Okay. Yeah, okay. All right, they are, both sets of minutes are passed. We have visitors tonight, a visitor, two visitors actually, and the regular BCTV person, Cor Trowbridge and...
Wendy Mason.
Wendy Mason from BCTV. And we'd like to have them present a little bit to us on the beginning of the meeting. And we have some little bit of survey here, I see. So, go right ahead.
Oh great. All right, I'm gonna come up in your mic. TV monitor, it can't be far away from that. My name's Cor Trowbridge, I'm the executive director of BCTV, Brattleboro Community Television. And I'm here with our board chair, Wendy Mason. Just to tell you a little bit about the strategic planning that we're doing for BCTV right now, and how that affects you, or to seek your input, really. You might've seen in today's paper, an article about, that we're reaching out to try and determine what goals we should be having for the upcoming five or six year period. At this time, every five years, we go through a contract renewal with Comcast, and also with Southern Vermont Cable. Those are our two cable providers, and they provide 90% of the funding for the work that we do. And just briefly, what BCTV is, is a public access station, different than some of the other stations like public, just plain old public television, in that we are funded by a small fee on cable subscriber fees. Small percentage of cable subscriber fees pays for this service. And the public benefit that the residents get is, we, coverage of municipal meetings like yours, and also, also, any resident can make a program and put it on our channel. So it's a means to communicate with local people using television. We have about 6,000 Comcast households in the Brattleboro Vernon Guilford area, and so that's who sees your programming, along with about 2,000 in the Southern Vermont Cable area that also get the programming. Those include the towns served by BUHS Putney and Dummerston. Those also go through the Leland Gray towns, New Fane towns, and Jamaica. So, what we do for you, and have done for you, I just want to introduce you to this website that we've had up for about a year. We do, we have your meetings on here, which we've been covering since, for 10 years?
At least.
At least. And we started putting them online in March 2011, I believe. And if you go to this watch menu, you go to meetings over here, you can scroll down to BUHS School Board. Hopefully you can see that, in tiny. And if you click on that, you're gonna go to your page. And there you are. So this page right here, that has this nice URL, brattbrowtv.org, BUHS School Board, that's your page of all of your meetings. The most recent one is gonna be displayed on top, but all of them are down below. All, all eight pages of them, okay?
If you weren't sure what you said about something, you can go back and review it.
So one thing that I would want to recommend to you for something specific is, when I go to the website for this board, which may or may not be this page, does that look familiar to you?
That's the supervisory union's website, so we're part of that.
For that board?
Yeah, that's our board.
Okay. So when you go to this page, right now, you see meeting agendas and meeting minutes. You could also have links to the meeting videos, just by putting the link to this page I just showed you, on this, on that page. So people could watch the meeting as well as seeing the minutes and the agendas and all that kind of stuff. Something else I noticed on this page is that under community links, there is a link to BCTV, but it's from a website that was dead about 10 years ago. So, so this is something that should be updated. We do send your, the links for each of the meetings to Jeff, I think is the guy at the office there. So I don't know if you ever see those links distributed, or have access to them, but for your purposes, you could be making a lot more use of these videos. You are paying for them, and we know people watch them, but, but it's really meant to be a tool for your use. We've set this website up, so each page, if you go to this board meeting, your last board meeting, could really be a mini website for the meeting. You could add links, you could add documents, you could add descriptions, you could add... Debbie's taking note of agenda items, and the time codes for those, and we're gonna start entering those on there, so you could be scrolling through to whichever agenda item you wanted to go to. So it's really built to be an online resource for the people who are using it. And I'd be happy to talk to anyone more about that, who was interested, or would be interested in using that.
And that's brattbrowtv.org again, just so you know.
Right. We plan out this meeting on the Thursday night following the meeting, following this meeting. So your meetings are Monday, so on the Thursday night following the meeting, your meeting's always gonna be on, in the sort of 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock-ish time. That's something that you can tell people as well. What else do we do? We have, I worked with Jim Day and Gary Blongren a while ago, to get BUHS TV on BCTV, which I'm sure you're all aware of. And we have that also on the website, in this BUHS TV news series. So again, all of those shows are here. And this is a show that we not only have been broadcasting live on Channel 10 at the time of the morning advisory report, but we also have been rebroadcasting it at 6:00 PM on Channel 8 for parents who weren't able to see it live. We did see, with the exchange students that you have, where you do see a lot of international viewers of that show. So that's something. But that's a collaboration that we've had with the school, that we're really proud of. And we also have covered graduation, as many of you know, and that's another series. This also is a link you can have on the school website, is this graduation. And we also broadcast that live on Channel 10. So we got, we do have a lot of views live on that. And then again, these are all the graduations that we've covered. We have covered some sports, but it's mainly been because coaches have recorded some of their games, and then given them to us to show. I am gonna be meeting with Steve Perrin and hopefully some other interested faculty in August, to talk a little bit more in detail about how we could facilitate that more, and what it would take. I know people want to watch high school sports on BCTV, it's just a matter of, that something would have a cost. So, for us to do it, but if coaches are making game tapes anyway, maybe that's something that's, that can just happen. We publicize the schedule in the reformer and in the commons on a weekly basis, so people can find out when their meeting is, or all these other shows. And we also have the schedule on the website, right here, the TV schedule, which is an online TV guide. So here's the schedule for today. And what do you know, the BUHS School Board was on at 2:30 PM. So that's right there, on Channel 10. And you can find out what time it is, and you can also click right through to the on-demand version of it. So, the reason that we work so hard to try and, and tell people when things are on, is that, when you go to your cable guide right now, unlike other channels that have shows broken out on the cable guide, ours just show one long thing that says local, one long program. So right now, what we would like to do, work with Comcast on, is getting access to that cable guide, so that people can click on the shows, and use the cable guide the way they do normally for shows, which is, click on it, find out more information about it, and DVR it, something like that. But we found ways to try and get the word out about when programming is, using other meets.
And you can also find our schedules every week in the reformer and on our Facebook page as well. So there's multiple ways to find it.
Now I'd like to show you a very short three-minute video, that's just a compilation of what's on BCTV right now. And then I'd like to get your feedback and comments.
This is BCTV, Brattleboro's own bag access TV station, the first of its kind in the state of Vermont, and the facility behind the Comcast cable channels 8 and 10, our government and education sister channel. From recordings of area events like lectures and readings from places like Brooks Memorial Library, to music, dance, and other art performances out in the community, to the station's robust municipal coverage in every one of the towns we serve. See, technically, BCTV serves a lot more than just Brattleboro, as our camera operators each week document meetings in Vernon, Guilford, Dummerston, Putney, New Fane, Townsend, and Jamaica. It's just that VGDP NTJ BCTV is a little less catchy than just BCTV. And town meetings are only the tip of the iceberg when it comes to the municipal coverage available on BCTV. Now there's town and high school board meetings, planning commission, development review board, and a whole lot more to choose from when it comes to keeping up with the inner workings of your town. Now Channel 10 alone boasted a wide range of other programming this year, including the ever-popular morning news advisory broadcast from the high school BUHS TV, along with wind-up for Rep. Mike Murwicky's own statehouse program, Montpelier Connection, which transmits via Ustream during the legislative session, bringing it back to the studio in the off-season. And when you move on over to Channel 8, there's a whole lot more programming to talk about. Here's the Landmark College Broadcast Journalism class, putting to work their three-week winter intensive by producing not one, but six different half-hour evening news programs. And then of course, there's the absolutely brilliant youngsters behind our annual summer camp. And there's plenty of other BCTV classics living within the folds of the Channel 8 Weekly Programming Guide, like our news roundup, 545 Live. Here's WTSA News Director Tim Johnson hosting another BCTV open studio interview. For some of the area's biggest events, like strolling of the heifers, we go all out at BCTV. Here we are on Stroll Weekend 2014, hooking up once again all four of our HD studio cameras after transporting just about every piece of equipment we own down the block to broadcast live from the River Garden. Here we are at BUHS Graduation 2014, getting ready to broadcast our coverage live in HD. Fast forward just a few short hours later, and we're setting it all up again in Townsend for Leland and Gray's Saturday morning graduation exercises. Here's the world-renowned Temple Grandin speaking at Landmark College, a BCTV production that generated over 1,000 views in its first weekend up. See, from 30 seconds to nine straight hours, BCTV's channels provide an avenue for content that's unbound by the formula of network TV.
So that gives you a little idea if you're not, if you don't watch BCTV of what's on now, and really like to hear from you, kind of your comments, suggestions, improvements. One thing that we're really interested in is having a high-definition channel, like all the other channels that are on cable, we have just a standard definition one, but that's something that we are sort of surveying people to see if that's important, and, and taking your suggestions.
Did everybody get a survey, by the way?
Oh, sorry Ricky. No, it's fine. If you would be so kind as to fill it out, and we'll leave it at the end of the meeting with the camera person. Questions?
I was just thinking about the shows that you do here. Have you ever done, if it's okay with the, the high school and middle school music directors, the concerts? There's about three or four times a year.
Yes.
And the parents and grandparents who work far away would really enjoy seeing that.
Concerts are a great, great question. Sometimes there's copyright issues. Concerts of theatrical performances are really hard because of that. But I think that's something that we're gonna be talking about in August, about what concerts could be, could have the copyright freedom to let us be able to do that. We also would have to have the parents sign off to let their children be on BCTV.
But we look better on high-definition television.
Gorgeous.
You definitely would. Me, I'm not so sure.
The difference is, well, I mean, a lot of you probably have high-definition televisions, and, and you know, the difference just is astounding, really, and we would like to be a part of that. A lot of people nowadays kind of expect that out of their television stations, and they stay in the 700s or the 800s, and they're not thinking about browsing Channels 10 or 8, because it's so low on the channel guide, so...
We produce everything in HD.
Yeah.
So we just have to downgrade it to send it to Comcast.
My other thing is, I would like to see, and I don't know what this would involve, I know nothing about television, but I would like, particularly like to see these meetings broadcast in real time, and be interactive so that the people at home could make comments during the meeting.
Through Twitter or something?
Through, I don't know, through what? I told you, I don't know anything about it.
Live tweeting the BUHS Board meeting.
It just sounded like a good idea.
Yeah, very good.
Good? Good? That's, that's great comment.
We don't have any cable where I live, but I'm able to take advantage on the, on the net. So that's, I think that's really nice, that you can go and look up any meeting and, and use it that way, so.
And you can stream...
I don't think we're ever gonna get cable where I live, so...
Yeah, that's very common. We actually run into that a lot, of course, with our surveying. I actually myself don't have cable, but I watch programs online, either through the video demand function, or streaming it live, because you can watch Channels 8 and 10 actually live, whatever they're playing, through the website too.
A little shout-out to Debbie Lazar.
Yes.
Who comes here.
Can refer.
To record your meetings. Anything else? One thing I'm, I am gonna be talking to Steve and whatever faculty member wants to meet, about is just repurposing media. I know how much you all do to do outreach with media. You post photos, you, you make videos, you, you know, you're doing all this kind of stuff anyway. So, just talking about how you can also submit that to BCTV, so you're not doing something new. You're just, you're getting more distribution out of what you're already doing, because we are distributing through the channel and through the web. All right, well, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
And for your responses. Oh yeah, Lord.
What is the nonprofit fee? Is there a fee for nonprofits to be members?
We do have a nonprofit organizational membership kind of thing, and it's, it starts at $50, and it's sort of based on employee, number of employees. And, and it's just to, and then you get all the member benefits for the members of that organization. That's a way so that individuals can join as individuals, but it's a way for an organization to join in.
Thank you. So, when you do have time, please do fill out the surveys. You're welcome to place any other suggestions there that you may not be thinking of right now, and then Debbie can pick that up before she leaves tonight. That would be wonderful.
Okay. Thanks.
Just ignore us as a group. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you, thank you. Realized in my rush to get these folks on that I didn't complete the clerk's report section, see if there are any communications. Okay. If not, then we would move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion accordingly?
I'm going to go to consent agenda.
Second. Second by Ricky. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, or abstentions? Seeing none, we are in consent agenda. And as usual fashion, we will start with Finance Committee.
Finance Committee met on Thursday, June 11th, and we approved warrants numbers 1210, 1211, 1213, 1214, 1215, 1217, 1218, 1219, and 1220, for a total of $468,276.38. We also approved payrolls of May 1st, in the amount of $440,944.00. And May 29th, the amount of $455,524.23. We also reviewed the capital plan for FY 2016, and we reviewed the roof replacement project bid for FY 2016. And we will be meeting next, this Thursday, July 16th, at 8:00 AM in the Jane C. Kane Conference Room, at the Supervisory Union Office on Glen Street.
Which one is that building?
It is the auditorium roof.
Oh yeah.
That one's been on the, on the docket for a while. Yep. Gonna get it done this summer. Okay, any questions or comments? We, just as a note here, we, I received a letter from the, the new auditing group, Tyler Sims and St. Savara, kind of a regular letter, just saying that they expect to begin the audit approximately on July 1st, and then there's a lot of reasonable assurances and all that that goes along with the audit letter. That may, may have started already, Ron? Yep, in process. Straightforward. Okay.
I have a quick question about the Finance Committee. You're not talking about the budget at all yet, are you? Still too early?
Not quite.
I mean, I know, that...
Not quite.
Sounds like a facetious question.
Well, in a roundabout way, we are, as we talk about these, these projects.
Okay. So if a Finance Committee member expressed interest in attending the Finance Committee meetings...
A non-Finance Committee member?
Town Finance Committee member expressed an interest to me in attending your hour, your Finance Committee meetings.
We have had them visit before.
Is it a little premature, though?
Well, if they're interested in the budget, it probably is a little bit.
Okay. Closer towards November.
But it's an open meeting, obviously they want to.
Yeah, they're certainly welcome, but I think this person was planning on coming to this meeting tonight, and I said, "Well, you're more than welcome anytime, please." But just, you know, eyeballing the agenda, we're not, and based on history, we're not talking about the budget for next year yet. We just hit this year for crying out loud.
Well, yeah, we just started 13 days ago.
Started spending it.
Started spending it, yeah.
Okay. Well, I can just, I'll re-request.
They are all open meetings, and they are publicized as to their time and location. Okay, how about WSCSU Finance?
We met on the 24th June, and approved warrants and payrolls, and Frank filled us in on a lot of, the, look at the year end, which wasn't quite done, but it, seven days left. But we, things seemed to be right on track, and then laid out a schedule of audits and different sorts of state reports that we would be giving and receiving during the rest of the summer and into the fall. And our next meeting is July 29th at 5:00 PM. All welcoming. The Town Finance person is certainly welcome as well. He'll be in the gym, king.
Okay, thank you Russ. Planning and policy?
Has not met.
Okay. Teacher Curriculum Committee?
Has not met, but I understand that we are gonna have to put a meeting together pretty quickly, because there's some 1% stuff to, for us to approve, but we haven't, we have not met since our last meeting. But we will be scheduling one of those really soon.
There's also, was a, is a request, Andy's gonna mention that, or Steve sent me for a leave of absence. Does that require us to, or will be the TCC Committee this time of year to vote on that, or to do that?
We can do it, TCC, or we can do it in the regular...
I mean, I know they can do it, but is there, just a leave of absence generally?
He did send me with that request.
Okay.
So, as far as procedure...
Okay. Well, that normally this time of year would just, TCC would handle that, but it's already pretty much in the works, right?
Maybe we should just do it tonight, during high school report?
We're gonna need you on that.
Okay. All right, yeah, we should, that should be an executive session matter, so we can do Okay. All right. BAM's Committee?
BAM's Committee met on June 18th, and we approved the hiring of a tech ed person, an academic support person, and a .25 foreign language person, so I believe, and Mr. Lyman can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think all the staff stuff is in place for next year at BAM.
Correct.
Okay. Last I knew, that's where we were, but, so, but we did, but we did some, we did some approval of some hiring at that meeting, and then we also did, we approved a number of 1% things, some for teams, and some for individual teachers and other things, so...
Do we ratify that?
Nope.
It was a tech ed and a .25 foreign language?
And an academic support.
Well, the academic support, we were, we were still waiting at that one.
Okay, but it's been...
No, it hasn't.
Okay. So no academic support?
Oh.
Didn't have it? Yeah. All right.
But we did authorize a summer intern for the meetings.
Yep.
Intern.
Intern. Yep.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification, are we sure we don't have to ratify, the full board doesn't have to ratify what a committee did, even though we authorized the committee to act?
Well, it will be, once we approve, once we approve consent agenda, that ratifies everybody's report. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's, that's usually the way.
Oh, not...
When we approve, when we all approve consent agenda in a few minutes, then we'll approve everybody's reports. And that's when that takes, that ratifies.
Okay.
At that point.
Okay, thank you, Ricky. WRCC committee did meet. And we approved the appointment of a new co-op coordinator, Raymond Dunn. We accepted a resignation of the automotive para. And we reviewed and approved four 1% funds as requested. I think that's it, right? That's what we did?
That's it. And, and we're not replacing that para. So that's one staff.
That's the plan at this point.
We're not replacing.
Okay. Anything else for consent agenda? None? Is there a motion to accept consent agenda?
To move.
Ruth?
Second.
Second? Lori or Mike?
Mike.
Lori was louder. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions seeing none? Consent agenda is passed and we move on to administrative reports. You're filling in for Mr. Perrin, would you like to?
Sure.
Let you have.
Well, Mr. Perrin, apologies for not being able to be here tonight. Seven of us have some talking points. Graduation was a great success. We had, we're glad to have such great weather and the feedback we've gotten has been very positive. We were able to attend, it was a great event. A group of UHS teachers spent a week studying the process of implementing proficiency-based practices at the UHS. For the 15, 16 school year, we'll be focusing, we will focus on piloting proficiency-based assessments in the classroom and community outreach. We'll be sharing more with the board at the goal-setting session later this summer. Stodil staff has been working hard to prepare the school for the rapidly approaching school year. Work has begun auditorium lighting to replace fixtures with more efficiency, energy-efficient ones. The auditorium roof is scheduled to begin in August. And the floor work in the high school, middle school, and WRCC are scheduled to begin soon. Work on the new building access system is also scheduled for later July. And we're still waiting for materials to arrive to finish the concrete front. And then the other one was the staff, do you want to talk about that now or wait?
The, yeah, that would do an executive session, yeah.
What's the new building access?
So the, the security system with the swipe card and the punch, each one of those, it's outdated, is my understanding. And many of them are not working, you know, you just need a key, so we're updating the whole system.
I remember that.
I have a question to you. I really didn't get it. You're talking about proficiency-based learning and then I heard community outreach. How did, how do those things meld together?
I believe, and I was just reading, so I think that there's a lot of what we have to do is, is educating the community on what proficiency-based assessment is going to be. Because it'll be eventually, we'll move away from that numerical grade system that we've been on. And so we want to make sure the community is aware and understands fully what we're implementing so that we frontload that as opposed to be reactive.
Yeah, do you know what the approximate timeframe on the auditorium roof is once it gets started? Is that a?
He does not give you that information.
It's sounding like getting awfully close to the.
That's what I thought.
Intervent should begin by August, so.
Well, we probably don't, is there anything right off the bat that has to happen in the auditorium or?
We typically will have freshman morning taking in there.
Just with me. It's not much. August 26th or something like that.
One time a year, he uses it.
Well, somehow we survived the flood and worked around it, so it probably is a workaround for this, too. But hopefully it won't take too many weeks to, and it'll start early in August.
Well, the fact that I have to have that meeting, I should prompt them to get it done.
Okay, well.
It should be good motivation for them.
There might be board members that can go up and roll some rubber out and.
Well, I thought maybe Mr. Staley would get desperate and go up and roll some rubber. But no, you have to be certified in that roofing.
Okay, well, thank you. Thanks for filling in for Mr. Perrin. BAMS?
Yeah, so our graduation, our move-up ceremony, grade move-up was also successful. It's amazing, we packed that high school gym packed tight.
So speaker.
Yeah, since he draws a big crowd, so. It went well and was happy, happy with everything, the, like, all the work in the years prior made the process really smooth for the new guy coming in who was curious. We, currently we have beams and our, our summer programming, our summer learning combined with our beams, summer program going on. And that's a really impressive thing. We have between 45 and 50 students every, every day coming to that. It fluctuates a little bit by week, but that's a four-week program. And then we have a humanities camp, which happens, I think it's the first week of August, which is a totally separate thing, but it's grant-funded, good state. But we have that, and then we have a wilderness camp, the second week of August, that's also with the beams. So very happy so far with the summer learning, it's been smooth. The kids have been really great, good staff, and very happy with that process. They've been doing things with the afternoon stuff, the beams part of it, they're doing things like blueberry picking, going to Memorial Park, going to Broad Brook, swimming. Kids love being out in the gym and being able to basically just have a lot of fun and run around. But the gym is real popular. A couple of things going on with us, we had, we did a couple of days of training. We call it Alice training, which is learning about kind of a potentially new approach to responding to school crisis, particularly active, active shooters and looking at how schools have traditionally responded with traditional lockdowns and looking at a more proactive approach to that. So two pretty intensive days of training at the end of June. Most, most of the administration did that. And so I'm sure there'll be more to share as we move along with that. Right before that, we went to a week at the Middle Grades Institute, which is kind of in coordination with the Terrant, our partnership with Terrant. And you can look through this little handout I have. It's a little summary that I sent to the staff with a nice little picture at the end. Basically, well, so we spent a week at Vermont Tech, staying in dorms. Some people drove home during the week, but most of us stayed in dorms and had a great time. I was, we were able to get, I think 19 of us to go. Joe Rivers has been, been teaching up there as a leader for that Middle Grades Institute for about 20 years. So this was the first time that BAMS has had a team there, so I was pretty excited to have 19 of us there. We made a lot of really great progress moving our school forward. This, this has links in it, which you obviously can't click on on paper, but if any of you want access to them, you could certainly send me an email and I'll give you more access. We, our facilitator, who will be working with us, her name's Rachel Mark. And she, she'll work for Terrant, she'll come in. And the next three years, we'll be partnered with our school and really facilitating some transformative work with the middle school. And she helped facilitate those really tough conversations we have up there. So, you know, if you took a minute to read this, we really tackled PLPs, which are part of Act 77 in the law, and also making our Chromebooked one-to-one initiative really more effective and putting in really detailed plans for how to distribute all the nuts and bolts of how the kids take around Chromebooks, but also how they're used by teams. And so some really, really great work that just, you don't have the opportunity to work 18 teachers working together for five days straight to be able to have that kind of time to work and really make plans. And what we did was broke off in a lot of subgroups to tackle certain topics and make decisions on behalf of the entire school. And it was pretty powerful. And then we had to have group decisions, like the group is about this size. So we're sitting there trying to make really major decisions for the entire school and to get everybody to agree on what we're going to do was at times challenging. And it was powerful, I thought. So I was really happy with that. And I look forward to updating you as we move forward with this work. Last but not least, I wanted to announce a resignation, which a little surprised to get. Norm Whittle is resigning after 19 years in our district and to take another job, another position at high school in New Hampshire. Really seemed to want to get back to the high school level. So he, he really wanted to make sure that the board understood how appreciative he was of those, for those 19 years. So I would ask if you accept his resignation.
I move we accept Norm Whittle's resignation with regret.
Second.
Second by Ruth.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed or abstentions seeing none? Resignation is approved?
That's all I have, thanks.
I have a question.
Sure.
This middle school institute, Middle Grades Institute that you went to, does that whole thing have any connection with the proficiency-based learning that Andy is talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect question. Yes, it just feeds right into it.
Okay, I thought it did, but I wanted to make sure.
We didn't specifically tackle that at the Middle Grades Institute. But our partnership with the Terrant, there's three major goals with them. The PLPs, the one-to-one, and proficiency-based, that whole piece. So, yes, very much so.
So everything is kind of progressing along?
Yes.
PLPs, what was the middle one?
Personalized learning plans, PLPs, the one-to-one Chromebook initiative, which is a little more of a short-term goal. And then the proficiency-based education is probably a little further out. It's a little less urgent than the high school, but it's there.
Okay, thank you, Keith. Mr. Burnett?
Thanks, Rick. So this summer, WRCC will be offering us a summer STEM program for middle-school-aged girls. It's going to be focusing on STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. And right now, we have 24 participants signed up. And we will be providing busing to and from their home sites as well. So that'll be beginning the last week of July and into the first week of August. So we're looking forward to that, the first ever STEM summer program. Get young ladies interested in this ever-growing field of STEM. The week of June 29th, WRCC engineering student, Leanne Ogden, I spoke about pretty in previous meetings, competed in the Skills USA National Competition held in Louisville, Kentucky. Leanne completed, competed in the computer-aided drafting competition and placed 18th in the country. So good for Leanne, job well done. And thanks to Amy Anthony, our engineering teacher, for traveling with Leanne for an entire week after school was out. Our FBLA organization recently attended their summer FBLA conference held in Chicago, Illinois. The kids did great in all the business experiences they encountered. And the kids had experiences they could only dream of. We want to thank the board for continued support of FBLA. And thanks to the advisors, Barb Bincey and Mary Beth Cornell, for traveling with the students. For the past three weeks, the WRCC culinary space has hosted a culinary training for 24 local adults seeking out culinary skills and preparation. This program was funded through a grant, through Strolling of the Heifers, and orchestrated by Orlie Munson, and was taught by Tristan Tolino. So this is a great community-based opportunity for adults in the rural area. And now they will be doing internships throughout the rest of the summer at local culinary establishments to utilize the skills they've learned. And hopefully they'll get jobs, full-time jobs after the internships, which is great. Next week, I will be attending a three-day Career Center Directors Conference in Fort Smith, New Hampshire. And this conference will include all Career Center directors from the state of Vermont, New Hampshire, and Maine. This is the second year that all three state directors have met to share best practices within the CTE areas. And this is a great opportunity to learn what other New England states are focusing on for CTE improvement and to share out with each other. So I'm looking forward to that for the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and next week. And our annual award ceremony was held before school was out. And we had about 300 people show up, which was a great turnout. They all enjoyed dinner. And I want to thank the community for showing and supporting the Career Center. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, a quick question?
Yeah.
So you mentioned there's 24 students that have signed up for the STEM program this summer. What would the capacity for that be? Is that the capacity?
There hasn't been a capacity set.
Okay.
And we're still accepting applications until the end of this week.
Excellent.
And Jana Crass is our summer coordinator. She can be reached by via email through the district.
I guess I'm too old since I'm past eighth grade.
We'll be able to make one accept.
Never too old?
Never.
Okay, thank you. Central office?
Yeah, I have two items that require executive session personnel, so. I'll wait and.
All right. All right, and I have nothing specific. So I believe that concludes administrative reports. And we move on to unfinished business, which includes a policy review of the dress code.
Russ hinted out at the beginning of this meeting some, some revisions that he put into this, just rearranging things, nothing substantive. Definitely like your arrangement better. So we will happily accept that as a friendly amendment and go with that. Other than that, any other notes for the second reading of this, folks?
The two questions I had was one, towards the beginning, it talks about the board shall authorize school regulations. Are there school regulations beyond this on the rest of?
Yeah.
There are, okay, okay. And those are in the, what's handed out.
There are some slightly different policy procedural things at BAMS, right?
Yeah.
Right.
We're still kind of asking those out a little bit, but.
And then another. So an example could be the Career Center with, you know, the shops, the requirements.
So this is the official second reading, which would mean that our next meeting, it would be up for adoption. So if there are any, any issues, get them, get them out there.
Yeah, the only other thing, well, one is just sort of amused that hats and caps are banned in middle school and it's up to discretion of the high school and Career Center. You're okay with that? I could wander way into that. Okay.
Works pretty well for us.
It's a big responsibility.
Okay. That's the second reading of that. Is there anything else for unfinished business? On the new business, we already. Under new business, we already heard from DCTV, is there...
This is an attachment. Is that... You sent it to Barb. If I don't do it in line.
Is there anything else under new business? Okay. If not, is there a motion to move into executive session?
I move we go into executive session for personnel matters.
Okay. Second? Okay, Sean? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.